Can I call this meeting in order? Will you all please rise and join in? Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Woods.
Here ma'am.
Vice Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pro Tem Lit.
Here.
Councilmember Morciano.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Additions, deletions, modifications, do we have any of that?
No, sir.
Next is announcement and presentations, Florida Turnpike Widening Project. I would like to call Brandon Bobo to the podium, please. Mr. Bobo, would you please introduce the other people that are with you? I think it's Brandon, Carol, Andrew, and Stephen.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Brandon Bobo with HNTB. I'm the Turnpike Design Project Manager for this project. Also presenting with me tonight is Andrew Velazquez with Atkins. He's the Turnpike Program Director for Planning and Traffic. And we also have Carol Scott, DOT. She's the Turnpike Planning Manager. And we also have Stephen Waterston with HDR. He's our Design PM, so he's the consultant doing engineering design. So once again, thank you for having us tonight. Basically, I'm here to talk about our widening project on the Turnpike Main Line from north of Beeline Highway, State Road 710, to West Indian Town Road, State Road 706. It's approximately milepost 106 to 117. And so tonight, we're basically going to give you a brief project overview, talk about the main line widening. We'll touch on the different interchange improvements that are going on within the project. We'll do a brief talk about the schedule, and then we'll open it up for questions and/or discussion. So if you see the map, this is the project overview. You'll see the highlighted portion, that is your city limits, Palm Beach Gardens. We have three different interchanges within the project limits, two of those being within your city limits. Basically down, starting at the south, milepost 106, we have the State Road 710, Beeline Highway interchange. Moving north, we have State Road 786, PGA Boulevard interchange. And all the way at the north, we have State Road 706, West Indian Town Road interchange. Now, for this project, we are doing a widening capacity improvement. So the first thing we are looking to do, relieve existing congestion. We want to serve the future traffic demands. We're looking out at year 2040-plus. The current typical main line is four lanes. We're looking to widen that to eight lanes. So we've got two lanes going northbound to south. We're going to move that to four northbound and four southbound lanes. Obviously, with any interchange improvement or capacity improvement, we look to improve our operations and safety at all the interchanges. This project's going to replace several existing bridge overpasses because of the widening. We're going to evaluate the noise wall needs along the corridor. We're going to look to enhance our regional evacuation. As you can tell, we already got in hurricane season, so that's always very important to the traveling public. And we're also going to adhere to the PDNE commitments. The PDNE for this project did finish back in 2008, so it has been a while, but we are going to adhere to those PDNE commitments. Here are the existing bridge replacements. Starting to the north, we have a main line bridge that goes over the C-18 canal, Hungry Land Slough. So for the widening going from four lanes to eight, we're going to have to replace that bridge. And we also have three local overpass roads that go over the turnpike. Those will also need to be replaced due to the widening. Starting from the north, we have Donald Ross Road and Hood Road and North Lake Boulevard. We are doing ongoing coordination with both Palm Beach County and DOT District 4 on those local state roads to address pedestrian and bicycle needs. Here's the existing typical section. So as you can tell, there's two lanes in each direction, northbound and southbound, along with inside and outside shoulders. You notice on the right, which is the northbound direction, you'll see what's called an FGT specified width. That is Florida Gas Transmission. They have two gas lines running parallel to the turnpike, 18 and a tording four-inch line. There is a global agreement with DOT and FGT that calls for a specified width for two lines. That's a 60-foot width. And anytime that we encroach upon that width, we have to go to FGT to get their approval to do any of those improvements. Because of that, for our widening job, we're going to look to push everything to the west. So we're going to hold that northbound lane at that existing shoulder line and do all of the widening to the west within the existing turnpike right-of-way. Here's what a proposed typical section would look at, at one of your typical bridge overpasses. So we're going to replace the bridge. It's currently a two-span with a two-span as well, but we span over the FGT lines. Currently, those bridges have fill that's on top of the FGT lines, so we are going to span over them. You can see that we're going to four lanes in each direction. I'm now going to pass it off to Andrew, who's going to talk about each of the interchanges in our project and some of the traffic issues that we're having with them.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Andrew Velazquez here. Pleasure to present to you guys. I'm actually a Palm Beach Gardens resident, so finally get a project in our own backyard. So with this project, we are going to be improving the interchanges at State Road 710, Beeline Highway, PGA Boulevard, within the city limits, and also Indian Town Road up in Jupiter. So at the 710 Beeline Interchange, this interchange was built in 2006, connecting directly to Jog Road. Some of you probably remember when that was built. I certainly do. This interchange, right now, you know, as with the current configuration, does sit above the main line. So there's ramps that go up and climb in order to access the signalized intersection. We have noticed recently that some of the trucks that have been using, particularly in the morning, have slowed down the traffic backing up to the ramp. Not too big of an issue now, but down the road, that's something we do want to correct. Also, for trucks turning, we've noticed that there's been some curbs that have been hit here. It can show in the photos here. So that's something we're going to be looking at in terms of improving this intersection and interchange. So our proposed work here at this location is to actually widen the northbound off-ramp to two lanes. That would provide more queue storage, particularly for the heavy trucks that are going up and making a left turn, ensures adequate capacity moving forward, and we accommodate the turning radii accordingly. This diagram shows how that ramp would occur. You know, as Brandon mentioned, that we do have FGT that we have to deal with. That is something that, you know, wasn't envisioned back in 2006. So reconstructing this ramp in existing location would require FGT relocation. That's something that is likely not feasible. So we would look to put the ramp just to the outside of the FGT line, shown in that red hatching over there, and we would reconstruct the bridge over the main line. This is another aerial showing the extent of the widening and interchange reconfiguration to the north. So at PGA Boulevard, this interchange, you know, was built in the 1950s. This is the original configuration at PGA. Back in the mid-2000s, we did a project development environmental study to look at reconfiguring this interchange. I'll show that. So part of what we're looking at doing is kind of rehashing that concept, but taking a different spin on it. Today, PGA, the intersection, right now, actually today, it works really well. Pre-COVID, you know, we did have some intersection issues there, but even before that, we did do some internal lane improvements. Those turn lane improvements were implemented in 2017. We saw a great deal of improvement with that. We did actually present this to city staff, and they had recommended we look at some other issues at the intersection. So we are currently evaluating that. The interchange itself, with those improvements, still shows additional needs out to our 2040 horizon. In fact, we're showing by 2025 that that needed to be some additional improvements. Of course, this projection's based on pre-COVID condition. Likely, you know, with the current impacts, that might get pushed out a little bit. Nonetheless, that's our number 30 interchange ranking. We have roughly 140 interchanges system-wide. So it is up there, near the top of the list of interchange improvements. This concept shows the PDNE interchange configuration that was presented and approved way back, you know, 10-plus years ago. And what you see there, highlighted with the red boxes, is new ramps that we have proposed. We were proposing a new eastbound-to-southbound ramp in the southwest quadrant, shown there on the screen, on the top one. And on the bottom is the northbound-to-eastbound ramp, so north being to the right. You can see the Ballin Isles Country Club there. Those two ramps were proposed as part of the PDNE concept, as well as the intersection improvements. Those intersection improvements, like I just mentioned, had already been implemented. So coming back now with this design, we are actually still vetting out two potential options. One is to keep the interchange configuration the way it is. And two is to construct one of the ramps, the northbound-to-eastbound PGA Boulevard ramp. We did look at that other ramp, and because of the shift of the main line that Brandon just mentioned, constructing that ramp on the west side is not feasible. So getting into the two options, so this is a diagram, north being to the right of the interchange. The outline in blue that you see on the screen are the turn lanes that we've already implemented. As part of this project, we would be looking to extend the westbound right-turn lane getting onto the turnpike as part of the project, shown there in black. And then we'd also be widening the northbound off-ramp completely. You know, right now, it's a single northbound off-ramp. We widened it to two lanes completely, creating more storage for the traffic that gets off at that interchange. Okay, so with this, we did do an operational assessment. You know, we do that with a lot of our interchange proposals to see what would be the level of traffic conditions that we would expect to occur for this year. We're looking at the year 2040. And with that, you know, we do an analysis to determine the level of service. That's how we evaluate our intersections and roadways. You guys are familiar with that. With level service D, excuse me, being the kind of your minimum acceptable level of service or our target level of service, we're showing that that would occur in 2040 with level service F with this current modified no-build operation. In addition, we did some more detailed analysis, vehicle traffic particularly. This is sort of the morning peak conditions. We would see some backups that would extend to the length of the ramp, although it did not necessarily impact our main line in that analysis year. Option two retains one of the two ramps. This is the ramp that's in the northeast quadrant, or sorry, southeast quadrant, and it would be for northbound traffic heading eastbound on PGA Boulevard. So you can see here the ramp shown in orange. We would cross the FGT line, shown in red, and form a signalized intersection. That's a little different than what was looked at back in the previous study. This is more signalized before it wasn't. We think that now it's going to operate a little bit better. But it allows that traffic heading east to directly get off, not having to go through the other intersection. By doing so, you're splitting your traffic, getting off there, and thereby improving the intersection operations. So this is a result of our traffic operational analysis of option two. For that southbound left-turn traffic, because it's now using the new ramp, the existing intersection would have a reduction of 83% in traffic for that southbound left turn. Level service would be at our target thresholds, you know, level service C in the morning, level service D in the afternoon. So we, you know, we feel that from an operations perspective, this does improve the overall operations. Now, with this ramp being in place, not only does it help the turnpike, but it also helps east-west flow as well because you're able to allocate more green time for the other movements by splitting that traffic up. So there will be an overall improvement to PGA. This is a simplified matrix showing kind of our summary of our analysis of the no-build versus this option, modified no-build versus this option of the slip ramp. You know, with modified no-build, we're not looking at acquiring any right-of-way. Our level of service, worst case, would be level service E below our target threshold. We did do somewhat of a network-wide analysis, showing what the speeds are like, 57 miles an hour, shown here on the screen. We have some queuing. I showed that, extending up on the length of the ramp. With the option with the slip ramp, you know, we do require right-of-way. It does impact the Ballin Isles Maintenance Yard. You know, we've heard from them and met with them at least once. There are some LOS delay improvements significantly, and we don't really have to worry about the queuing there. So, you know, part of this outreach that we're doing is we did meet with city staff. They said come to the council to talk about this. No decisions have been made. We're still talking with Ballin Isles. So part of this meeting today is, you know, get some feedback on, you know, what we're presenting. Indian Town Road, I kind of blow this really quickly because this is up in Jupiter, but just to give you a kind of an insight of what's going on here. We did do some intersection improvements here back in 2013. Restriped one of the lanes there, and it really helps with the traffic. This interchange priority is number 49. It's lower down in our ranking. And the proposed work here, not a whole lot. We'd be looking to modify one of the ramps. This would be the eastbound-to-southbound movement, kind of consolidating that, and then doing some minor turn lane improvements for the eastbound left turn and the westbound right turn. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over back to Brandon to give you an overview of the schedule and get some feedback. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew. For the project schedule, before I touch on that, I just did want to let you know about a couple of other projects that have recently been completed or started construction. The first was resurfacing. That was basically from milepost 106 to 112, so from Beeline Highway to just north of Donald Ross Road. That did complete construction last summer, so you should notice some improvement with the roadway as it did get resurfaced. And the other project that just started in construction is our AET 8 project, which is essentially going all-electronic tolling through the ticket system. So it's a big project going all the way from milepost 88 to 236, but you will start to notice that some of those, the tolling points at the ramps are going to start to go away, and we're going to be doing main line tolling for all-electronic tolling. So you will start to see that within your limits. I believe two or three gantries are within our project limits. But that project's got a five-year schedule. This current project is not funded for construction, so that means we're outside the current DOT five-year work program. So the AET project would complete before this widening comes through. But as you can see on the project schedule, we are still in preliminary design. We do have some of that utility coordination mainly with FGT coming up later this fall. I would have our Phase 2 60% plans in spring of '22, at which point we would like to have another public information meeting, since it's been so long with the PDNE project, just to kind of put it back out to the public, let them know about the job. We would start right-of-way acquisition if needed in fall of '23, and then Phase 3 and Phase 4, 90 and 100%, in '24 and '25. Here's my contact information. Once again, I'm Brandon Bobo with HNTB, and Carol Scott, who is our Turnpike Planning Manager. At this point, we are finished with our presentation. We're open to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Very nice. Anybody got any questions? I know we need improvement there. Yeah, sure. Right?
Yeah, I do. I have some questions.
Ron? Okay. Rochelle, go ahead.
Okay. With the widening of the lanes from four to eight, because they're moving west, what kind of a buffer does it leave between the shopping center and where the Chabad is versus where it is now? How much of a cutoff are we, how much are they losing?
Essentially, we're staying within the existing right-of-way of the turnpike. So I think the right-of-way is 300 foot, 150 on each side of the main line center. So we'd be staying within our existing right-of-way. We're not encroaching anymore on any other property other than turnpike.
Can you pull the map up again? I'm sorry, can you pull up the map again so we can see the visual? Thank you.
Right, but how many feet closer is the roadway moving? I know the right-of-way there exists, but how much closer are we actually moving to where that fence is with the road?
With four additional lanes going to the west, you're looking like probably 60-some-odd feet more to the west than what's currently out there.
Okay, and you said the wall, the need for walls will be evaluated as the project moves forward?
Yes, we will be doing a noise wall evaluation. There were obviously noise walls studied at the PDNE level, but that's preliminary. So we'll be basically taking our final design and doing a noise analysis, and wherever noise walls are needed per codes and standards, we will obviously look to incorporate those into this project.
Yeah, 60 feet is a lot. With the, if we do the second option, would the left turn lane going east on PGA to go north on the turnpike still remain the way it is now? That wouldn't change.
Is that this one, Andrew?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, the left turn lane would remain unchanged. This would only be for the people who were heading east from the south, so northbound to eastbound traffic.
Okay, but that intersection would have less traffic if the other lanes go in that would come off directly east because they wouldn't have to swing around and come through there?
You got it. Absolutely.
Okay.
You good?
Yep.
Ron?
Just a couple of questions. You went by there pretty fast. Hard for me to follow up. Did you indicate on the bridge widening that PGA was or was not to be widened, that bridge across the turnpike? Do you have enough room there or no?
The actual PGA over the turnpike?
Yes.
Yes, I believe. Stephen, if you want to chime in, feel free.
Yeah, PGA Boulevard and Indian Town will be widened.
Can you please come to the microphone? Thank you.
You have a, you had a display there of the widening of the bridges.
Yes, PGA Boulevard and Indian Town Road, both of those bridges will be widened as part of this project, along with the ramp bridges that go over the turnpike. So the bridges that were listed are kind of the local bridges that were, that are kind of being impacted, but the District 4 bridges for PGA and Indian Town will be widened. And then also, as noted, the Jog Road Bridge will be widened also.
Okay, I was confused because I thought on the picture you showed it was Hood Road, not PGA, but everything's wide because you don't, okay, I got that.
Yeah, all the roadways that cross over the turnpike will be widened as part of this project, along with the bridge over the canal.
All right, and I did hear correctly you're going to do a noise analysis because we do have a wall at Steeplechase at the Beeline Interchange, and that was a hotly contested issue in the past. I was here for that one, too. I just wanted to be sure that we're not infringing upon those people's peace and quiet as well because it is an elevated issue and bridge. Okay, that will be done.
Well, yeah, especially for anything that's on the westbound side because we are now going much closer than the existing alignment is. We're definitely going to be studying noise walls along that entire corridor.
I understand the west side, but on the east side, where you're doing the elevation to the Beeline.
Yes.
We need to make sure that those walls serve to reduce noise reduction into Steeplechase or modify otherwise. So I'm just concerned about that. Also, last question is, we have had discussions with you, and you mentioned about that traffic signal at the turnpike in PGA in that right turn lane where we have the traffic signal versus what we used to have the hot right there. We get a lot of traveling residents complaining about sitting there at that red light when nothing, no traffic is going. Have you been able to look at that yet and give us any hope?
Yeah, so I, we did.
Can you please go closer to the mic? Thank you.
So, yes, we did. We actually spoke with our traffic operations group, and they said that is something that can potentially be accommodated. They had just done a field visit during COVID, and they didn't see any issues. So, but I asked them again. I said, well, for pre-COVID, could we do that? And they said, yeah, that's something that can be accommodated. So they're going to be going back out into the field, taking another look at it, and, you know, that's something that you could see down the road.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but do we have any idea of a timeframe when that might occur?
I'll have to check back with them.
Would you please? Because we'd be interested in that.
Absolutely. No, I'll definitely relay that message that the city wants to see it. I, absolutely.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Sorry, that's all.
Thank you, Ron. Mark, you have questions?
I do. I do. Couple of questions. North Lake Boulevard, the bridge, to redo that bridge. I know that we're having I-95 and North Lake Boulevard redone and potentially Beeline and North Lake Boulevard. And there's some issue because they're talking about doing both of those roughly at the same time. There's no way we could have a third project on North Lake Boulevard. And I don't think it is based on the timing. Is that?
Correct. This project's not funded for construction, so it's outside five years. So nothing on this would occur prior to 2025 at the earliest.
Okay. On the PGA Bridge, for the eastbound going from the south, heading east, cutting over Ballin Isles, you said you met with them one time? Okay, do we plan on meeting with them again prior to having a public meeting? Because they would probably need to be engaged in some way, shape, or form.
Yes, they had done a previous meeting request, and we met with them. We plan on giving them the next set of plans whenever we get a little bit further down the road with design. So our coordination is ongoing with Ballin Isles. We're well aware that they're an important piece of the equation when it comes to that property and that ramp and how it affects them.
Well, sure. I mean, it's cutting right into their property, but I think the picture showed three lanes exiting. Is that correct? And will it have to remain three lanes, or can that be edited?
Yeah, you, right. So we've got one lane coming off the turnpike. So it goes from one lane, and then as you get up to the intersection, it spreads out to three right-turn lanes to allow, to reduce kind of the cycle of the signal. So as you provide more lanes, more cars can turn right at that same point. So we just opened up to three lanes kind of within the last 100, 200 feet at the intersection. But the ramp itself proper is just kind of one lane coming up and through there. And that was done to minimize the right-of-way impacts to Ballin Isles and the golf course area there, but. And FGT impacts, yes. So, but as we get up to the intersection, it does get three lanes to kind of reduce all that footprint and the impacts.
Okay. And my last question in regards to the Beeline. I take that Beeline Bridge every day coming home, and it's amazing how poorly designed it was. I mean, the skid marks that you see and the scratches on those walls, and I'm amazed a truck hasn't flipped over the wall and right on the turnpike around on that turn. How do you read, so is the current bridge coming down, and you're building a new one with a better turning radius? Or is it just going to be revised to provide a better turning radius?
Right now, the plan is to replace that bridge with a new bridge that's wider, has better turning radii going through, and dual left turns to kind of come onto the bridge that we have. Better turns to come on there, a little bit more space, a little more shoulder widths on the bridge to allow trucks and vehicles to make that turn a little bit easier and have more space for them to do that.
More space because it does back up onto the turnpike during season, pre-COVID, and it's not going to be any higher than it currently is, and it won't be any further east than it currently is to Ron's point.
Actually, it will be a little bit higher because the bridge spans are going to get longer. So the bridge will have to go up higher to provide the same clearance. And we are going to go further east between the, because of the FGT lines, we've kind of got to go outside that FGT line to build the new ramps. But we will take into consideration the noise abatement that is out there now, any of the aesthetics that are out there now, and re, kind of re-put those back into play. So we understand that's going to be a sensitive subject, but we've kind of looking at the two options we have. How do we put this, improve the traffic flow there, but also making sure that we don't, you know, alienate the residents or make the residents too upset? So we want to, we do realize we'll have to provide some kind of noise abatement on that ramp, and we do it. And I think by improving the traffic flow, it'll help reduce some of the noise out there. I think it's always a nice benefit of, include traffic flow is noise, reduce noise.
And the widening is going to go to the west all the way through the corridor, correct?
That is correct.
So all of the properties that are on the west side of the turnpike, all the way along the pathway from PGA, and I guess, I'm not sure if Mirabella's going to be impacted, all the way along the way, you're going to be looking at a lot of soundproofing and abatement along that stretch. Well, I'm glad we're not dealing with Indian Town Road in this council because that's another whole argument that you'll have to interpret. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Maria, do you have any questions?
Well, you know, anytime we impact our neighbors, our communities here, you are going to have a lot of discussions. So having said that, I'm looking, you know, actually, I pulled up the satellite on my phone so I could get a better view of these. And starting with the Beeline Bridge, are you, you are not widening that bridge where it, or that off-ramp and on-ramp where it moves any closer to Steeplechase, correct? Are you within the footprint and going west?
Yeah.
It's kind of hard to, it's kind of hard to tell.
Yeah, we can pull up that, if you can pull up the presentation again, I'd appreciate it.
Because I'm looking at the page, and I really can't.
Okay, let me. Correct. I'm trying to get the annotation. There we go. So right now, the existing ramp is kind of along where this green line that I just drew is. That's kind of the existing ramp. So the existing ramp is within what we're calling the FGT specified width. And then between, so what we're looking at doing is to construct the new ramps between the existing ramp and the right-of-way line. So this line here, this red line here where the dash is, that's the right-of-way line.
So you are technically moving closer to the community, which makes it, which makes it even more imperative to have an accurate sound wall.
Yes.
Because that's, poor Steeplechase, they keep getting pounded by sound walls, by turnpike, by Beeline, so you all are treading lightly here.
We recognize that. We could see that with some of the original plans that were done, so yes.
Okay. And then when you move to, when you move to PGA, and you have the impact on Ballin Isles, maybe a little bit on Old Palm, I'm not sure, and obviously on the Chabad because you're going west where the road is going to be closer to the Chabad, your acquisition there on the Ballin, I don't think you have much acquisition on the Old Palm side, but your acquisition on the Ballin Isles side, how major is that?
Let me try and to.
It's going to be slide 12.
Right, I'm trying to get the slide back. Do you have control of the slide, or do I?
No, you got it.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Hold on. Close that. All right, there we go. Yeah, I'm trying to get rid of this. Okay, so then. All right. So, so the, so this, the new ramp that we're showing is, is coming in here between the FGT line. And again, we have this red line here that's the right of way line.
Right.
Um, we, the orange area that we're showing here is the right of way impacts that we would impact with Ballin Isles.
Right, that's the maintenance facility.
Right. I don't remember the, the square footage there of how many acres that is or how many square feet. It's not an, I don't think it, but we are not, I mean, we, this is the golf pack, the golf cart pass. We try to minimize those impacts. Really the only, the, the biggest impact is to that maintenance facility, the maintenance building they have in this corner here. Um, and, and again, that was to try and minimize what we're doing with FGT, but also to minimize how they come across. And this is a one-lane ramp, kind of going up as was discussed earlier. And then we flare out to triple right turn lanes as we get closer. Um, again, trying to minimize the impacts of the, to the golf course and, and not having any impact to any homes or.
And we're adding, you'd be adding a light there. That would be signalized, correct?
That is correct.
And then on the other side.
And it, and let me clarify that. It would be a signalized intersection for the eastbound direction only.
Right.
There'd be nothing on the westbound side.
I would, I'll reserve my questions. Go ahead.
All right, so we can go Chelsea and then, uh, no, go ahead, Chelsea. Then back to Mark and then back to Maria, whatever. Keep it open.
Maria and I, Maria and I can talk about roads for hours though, so that we, we'll probably come back to Maria, too. Could you explain a little bit more about noise analysis and walls for the people who are watching who this will happen in their backyard?
Okay. I mean, I can, I can come up with, I mean, I can talk a little bit.
Whoever can talk the loudest.
Whoever can talk the loudest. I mean, well, noise analysis is typically done, you know, throughout PDNE and now through design. And, um, you know, basically they have to go out there and measure the existing noise levels. Then they got to, you know, and look at the future condition, you know, whatever that looks like. Uh, they run a, a model that projects the amount of noise that's going to be, um, contributed by the future improvement. And depending on the amount of improvement in noise that dictates, you know, whether you get a, a wall or not. That's all going to be done as part of this project. And, and that will occur, uh, as the project moves on and things become more solidified. So right now, I mean, there, there has been some designations of noise walls through the PDNE. Uh, and that, you know, that, that's available from what the PDNE said, but that's also now going to be reevaluated.
Where, where is that available? Where could people find that?
Um, Turnpike can provide that upon request. Yeah.
A, a resident would have to request it from where to find out if there's going to be one in their backyard?
Right. Like, send me an email.
Yep, we have.
Okay.
Contact information is in the presentation, either myself or Carol.
Okay, great. Um, so when you were describing the Beeline interchange and the Indian Town interchange, what was the LOS on those comparatively? So you, um, you had it for PGA, but I didn't see it for Indian Town or Beeline.
Yeah, sure. Uh, for, for Beeline, the level of service is actually fairly good. Um, you know, it, it, the issue there is really the, the trucks and the slow-moving vehicles. So from a single operations perspective, it actually works fairly good, but the, the amount of trucks that are there, the space that they consume, the grade, yeah, the grade is really what's doing it. Uh, that hinders the operations. Uh, so level service wise, even in the future, you're still looking at level service C or something like that. Um, so it, it'll work fairly well with our improvement as well. Um, Indian Town Road, with the turn lane improvements, we're expecting acceptable level service improvements there. Target level service D.
Above D, or D or above?
D or above, yes.
Actually, I don't think Indian Town are not changing the number of lanes on the ramp or anything, correct?
Uh, we're going to a two-lane, or we are doing a two-lane off-ramp, yes, at Indian Town.
It seems like there's so much more room at Indian Town Road than there is at PGA or the Beeline. I mean, there is a lot more room there.
There is, yeah.
It's not as dense.
Right, yeah.
It was always a challenge that looking at PGA, even back in the PDNE study. Trying to find a, a concept that works and.
Yeah, it's boxed in.
Yeah, we've got the, everything in all four corners.
Right.
All right, one, one last quick question. So we've got your schedule, but what, what are the next steps? So have you gone through, you haven't gone through the TPA yet? You have, or what's, what's next?
Essentially, we had a meeting with TPA staff, but we are setting up meetings that we'll have with HOAs, with, uh, county, TPA. Uh, we can come back to you guys if you guys needed a, a follow-up. But essentially, we're progressing through the design. So we're still in the very early stages. We've got to go through our FGT coordination. And after that, then we continue on our design path. Our next phase would be sixties, nineties, hundreds. We'll continue down that design path. We'll obviously have a public information meeting where we present the project back out to the general public. Invite everyone hopefully in non-COVID times where we can actually have people in person. And we're going to continue that coordination with all the local agencies.
And where can people find that information so that they're educated about what's happening in their back? Because that's, that's what people are always saying, that they don't, they didn't know it was coming. So what can we do to educate our residents so that they have a place to go?
Projects have, uh, a website. I don't think this one does. But I mean, essentially, anytime you're seeking information, my name, Carol's name, contact the turnpike and we can provide.
I can do that, but what can the residents do? So if there's someone living in Ballin Isles or Old Palm that has no clue this is going on, uh, it'd be nice if they could reach out to us and we could actually send them somewhere for information.
We are looking to actually hold coordination meetings with HOAs. So as we move forward with the design, once we get further along into design, we will schedule with the different communities to try and go and do some of that outreach so that they do know about the project and it's not at the public information meeting the first time they're hearing about it. So I mean, we are planning to try and reach out as best we can to all the communities that are going to be affected. So I mean, that's probably going to be the best avenue, a presentation that we'll be making in the future.
Okay. I'm good.
Rochelle, how are you? Still good? You're on mute.
I have one, one other question, uh, with respect to the, the noise studies. Uh, does your department use the same people that did the noise studies on Nor, on the Beeline for Steeplechase? Is it the same people that we've been back and forth with multiple times and are trying to convince that, um, those studies don't really make sense for that area?
Yeah, I mean, I, we don't know. I, I don't know.
I think some of their studies they had were, were very old. So are you guys maybe making new studies based on?
Yeah.
Is that your question, Rochelle?
Yeah.
Yeah, because some of the data they had was old.
He's been to, to us several times trying to explain how those studies were done and, um.
Yeah, so our, our.
Yeah, the parameters of the studies were questionable.
Turnpike, okay, so it's turnpike staff.
Guidelines, DOT guidelines, and it is done in-house. It's not a consultant that does it. It is our GEC staff that do that noise analysis. So we are doing a new noise analysis, not using the old data.
It'll be done through your department, not through the, okay.
Correct.
One of the good things is Andrew lives here, the guy in Beeline seven, ten, came out from California. We're like, what are you doing here? You know, right? He was cool, but still. Mark, you got a follow-up question?
Um, I did. Uh, so it sounds like you are preparing heavily to be putting in some noise abatements and, and sound walls because you're expecting to have to do that based on the, the widening of the highway.
I, I will caveat that, that we do have to follow FHWA and DOT guidelines.
Right.
So wherever those tell us that we need a wall, DOT is going to put a wall there. If they tell us that it's not cost feasible and that one is not to be placed, we typically, we have to follow those FHWA and DOT guidelines. So when we do those noise studies, we do follow that, basically law, FHWA and DOT guidelines. And where they tell us to put a wall, we'll make sure that that wall gets in part of, part of this project.
Well, just to follow up on Mark's question, um, is that, uh, the noise stud, study current? Or are you, is it going to be projected out 10 years? Because traffic's just going to get worse and worse. And if you don't put the sound barriers up for a projected problem, then.
Now, the same way that we look at a roadway for the widening based on future traffic.
Okay.
We look at those future traffic and that's what.
With the formula.
So there's models that they run based on the future eight lanes, how much traffic is expected on that. That's the noise volumes they use for the ultimate.
It's going to be updated.
Understood. Maria?
No, I'm good.
Uh, one last question. I, I do fully accept the need to widen the turnpike. It's just impact on the neighbors. But, um, so you've got the gas lines and there's nothing you can do to like go over top of them and shift some of these lanes further west because I understand you can't build a lane right on top of the gas lines. But some of these bridges on the east side of the highway that you're looking to move further east to avoid being over top of the gas lines, I mean, if it's elevated, what, what is the, what is the regulation there? Because I think that would solve a lot of your problems, a lot of the problems on the east side, especially at Beeline and PGA on, on the east side of the highway. So you can't even be elevated over top of those gas lines?
You can't be elevated over them. So the, the local roads that we're replacing, Hood Road, uh, North Lake, Donald Ross, those are all spanning the gas line. So essentially the bridge is still relatively in the same place vertically. You just extend the span beyond the FGT gas line. Currently, there's earthen MS walls that are on top of them. When we come in and we have to replace the bridge because of the widening, the eight lane does not fit in the existing typical section. So we've got to widen the bridge or we've got to replace the bridge anyways. At that point, we just extend the span to be able to span over FGT so that in the future, they can come and access their lines if they ever have any issues.
And you can't put an off-ramp over top of that?
Not permanent. We try and do our crossings with FGT at point of impact versus a long longitudinal. So like the roadway itself, there underneath beyond the shoulder, we don't want to put miles of pavement, new pavement. We can't. FGT won't allow.
Well, not the pavement, but if you're going to be doing an off-ramp in a bridge that's going up to an elevated bridge.
That needs to be outside the specified width. You can cross them at grade.
Okay, but you can't.
Putting more dirt on them with the roadway.
Got it.
They're typically, they're going to reject that.
Got it. Okay, I just, I just didn't know. So, because you have all this space and people are looking and go, why did they move it all the way over here and not just?
Essentially, the answer is you could ask FGT to move, but then DOT has to pay for that and that becomes cost prohibitive. The project's not going to happen.
Thank you.
All right. So anyway, you can tell that we're very ingrained in our traffic situation here because, um, the community gets forensic when these things come up. And you have no idea how much work we did with DOT on the North Lake interchange. We went to countless meetings every day of the week. The community got involved. Um, DOT wanted to basically do eminent domain all the way down to MacArthur, put everybody out of business and that was one model. And then, uh, we came together with workshops and so on. And luckily, we've, we've, we've got the one, the la, the least invasive but efficient for the city. So, but we're boxed in by traffic. So it's always an issue with our community and how much they raise it up. I mean, look at North Lake Boulevard, you know that. And, um, so we live traffic with this council. It's just one thing that our community, and the noise, because we're boxed in by it. And it's just different for Jupiter and, and so on. So, um, the more you stay informed, the more we can keep our, our citizens informed, which is our job. And, and we'll be, we'll be everywhere with the workshops and we'll be, the HOAs will be calling. And we, we, we worked well with DOT and I'm sure we'll work well with you guys. And just getting the information out there is what we need to do to keep everything down to a dull roar as we improve the city.
That's Carol Scott with Florida's Turnpike. If I may add, um, just to try to take some of the mystery out of the noise wall analysis, we actually updated our noise wall video. Um, we have that on our website and we can send a link so you guys, you know, can share it with the residents. It talks about the different regulations. It has really good graphics to show kind of how the noise goes over the wall. And so it is helpful for non-noise specialists like myself to even understand that. So we can offer that up to you as well.
Well, I will say it was an excellent presentation. Um, and we appreciate your time coming to inform us. So we're way ahead of the curve on getting the information out. But it'll blow up as you guys, as we move closer to this. It just does. Um, if council has nothing further, we can, we can.
Can you just say that website out loud one time so that if anyone's watching, they can?
Um, it's florida'sturnpike.com. Um, but it's, I don't know the exact, you know, it's a few pages in, so we can send that link out. But, um, florida'sturnpike.com has the, um, noise wall video. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, you all. I guess we can move on to the American Heart Association Lifetime EMS Award.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. We'll, we'll be talking to you. Um, Corey Passett and Division Chief EMS, can you come to the podium, please?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Ferris. Uh, I find myself, uh, up at the podium again. Going to present, as you can see on the screen above, our fourth, uh, consecutive Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award. Now, American Heart Association has very strict guidelines and metrics that we have to measure and, and meet in order to achieve this prestigious recognition. Uh, this is the fourth time in a row. So, uh, it definitely takes, uh, boots in the field and the paramedics and EMTs that are out there uh, to meet these metrics, which we've done the past four years. But it also takes resources and other departments in the city to be able to meet these, uh, this criteria, too. So I not only hand, uh, or give a round of applause to our, our people in the field, but to a city that really works together inter-departmentally to make sure that we can provide the highest level of service to our citizens. So again, it's my pleasure to, uh, present digitally, uh, the 2020 Mission Lifeline Gold Plus EMS Award. And normally we have representatives from American Heart and, and other people, but obviously because of COVID, we have to try to limit the amount of people in, in the building. So, um, once again, it's my pleasure and, and we'll keep getting it every year.
Doesn't diminish how important it is, you know? Anybody got anything to say? Yeah, little golf clap?
Little golf clap. Uh, just, just when you said you work with other departments in the city, what other departments do you work with?
Well, it, I mean, interdepartmentally. So we, I mean, it takes the fleet to make sure our trucks are, are functioning. Uh, it takes, you know, finance to make sure we have the budget and line items by the resources we need. So that's what I meant. It, it takes a village, if you will, or a city to provide service. And also I forgot to mention our local partners, uh, in the hospital, Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center, because they're part of that, too. One of the metrics that we measure is first medical contact from our paramedics to, uh, uh, intervention at the hospital. So they have to put in just as much effort, too, to make sure that we meet that 90-minute goal. Uh, and when we find them slipping, we make sure we keep them in line because we want to maintain our high level of service and, and keep bringing this home to the city. So.
I have a question, Corey. I'm sorry.
No, I do want to do a shout out, though. I, small story. Um, I have a college, I mean, a high school, um, associate who called me up and said, I think my dad is having a stroke. What should I do? I said, call 911. I said, they'll triage you. They'll, they'll figure out what they need to do. They'll come to your house. It's safe. And then if he's having a stroke, you're going to take him to St. Mary's. And if he's having a heart, heart attack, he's going to go to Gardens. And sure enough, he was having a stroke and they took him to St. Mary's. And they called me the next day and said, thank you for, thank you for suggesting we call 911.
And if he's having a baby, you can go to Jupiter.
They, they did actually call to say how wonderful a job you did. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's our pleasure. And then, and while I'm on the microphone, and that brings up a good point is even though this during, during this time of pandemic and COVID, it is safe to call 911. There, no one should have any reason to fear of catching or being affected by COVID. We're still out there. We're still available 24/7, 365. Uh, fire rescue is safe. The hospitals are safe. And please don't ignore signs symptoms of a stroke or a heart attack for that, for that matter. So.
And I did share with him that the COVID, uh, grid that we get every day, I shared with him so he could see the fact that, you know, we don't have, our people are not in quarantine and we, we're, we're very safe. And so that, that was also something that helped them with their decision.
Absolutely.
Well, Corey, while we're bragging about the fire department, um, is it, we're the only dual-accredited, uh, fire department in Palm Beach County and there's only like four in the state of Florida?
Five in the state of Florida. We're the only one in Palm Beach County to be dual-credited, uh, through CAS and, and, um, CFAI, which is the fireside and EMS side. So yes, in Palm Beach County, we're the only dual-credited agency in the fifth in the state of Florida.
Is this in addition to that, or this particular award, or is this something that we only have or, or the other agencies getting this one?
So every agency has the opportunity to put in for this. A lot of them can't meet the metrics. They don't have, uh, facilities that are available to do the interventions or they don't have the equipment. They don't have the resources. And that's why I said it really takes the city and, and other departments to make sure that we have those resources. So some people will put in, uh, and might not make it. And so it is, it is very stringent and it's not easy to, to get. So, um, hopefully that answers.
Well, I will say, you know, when we're out and about, you know, we're really ingrained with the community and, and we constantly hear, the chief and I were talking about that this evening, where do, wherever you want. Anyway, he left. But, um, constantly hear about the police and the fire and how well you guys do your job and how professional you are. And that comes with education and that comes with high level of service awards like this. It reflects on everybody that works for the fire department. So, and we get to brag because in our position, you know, we get the, all the other stuff. But we get to help make our, our, uh, first responders shine because you guys do such a great job. So, and I know.
Appreciate it. And, and things like this.
Nice job, Corey. Thank you. Nice job, Corey. Thank you.
Things like this only validate the work that we're doing out in the field.
Right on. Exactly.
Thank you.
All right. We good? Great presentation. Again, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Next is comments from the publics. I do not have any comment cards for items on the agenda, so we'll move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I do have a few items to bring you up to date on this evening. I would like to start with our Economic Recovery Act. As you recall, last May 7th, city council meeting unanimously voted under Resolution 37. Oh yeah, that, more technical stuff here. Up there. Under, on May 7th, under Resolution 37, council unanimously to approve the Economic Recovery Act, which included Small Business Relief Fund and the Unemployment Residents Relief Fund. The act was funded in the amount of $1.3 million that we took from our Economic Development Fund. A million was dedicated towards the Small Business Relief Fund, while 300,000 was dedicated to the Unemployment Residents Relief Fund. As you know, the Small Business Relief Fund was an emergency grant program developed for locally-owned small businesses operating within the municipal boundaries of the city. The city partnered with the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce and the PGA Corridor Association, our business community representatives, and developed a program to provide significant relief to businesses with no more than 25 employees. We wanted to provide critical financial support to 50 businesses and one-time grant payments of $20,000 for those who qualified. Obviously, the goal was to offset the loss of revenue with these small businesses and try to get people back to work in their jobs. I would like to update you on how we did on these three programs. First, Phase 1. As you can see on the screen, we had 21 businesses and they were awarded different amounts to the total of $403,895. When we went to Phase 2, as you can see, there were eight businesses that were awarded a total of $120,000. When we went to Phase 3, there were 40 businesses awarded $465,000. Some of the names you can see posted up there now. We expended of the $1 million, $988,895 awarded to 69 small businesses in this community. Additionally, if you'll recall, the city allocated $10,000 for the marketing of the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce, "I Love Local" campaign, which encouraged our consumers to support the businesses in North County. With that successful program, we also undertook the Unemployed Resident Relief Fund Program. That was designed to give our residents some immediate relief of those residents who were unemployed and affected by the COVID-19 economic slowdown. A public gift card in the amount of $250 was provided to unemployed residents to help them with their daily living costs. Now, I'd like to update you on how that program fared. Phase 1, May 18 through 21, at the Gardens North County District Park, we served 803 residents for a total gift card value of $20750. Phase 2, which occurred on May 20, May 28, at the Gardens District Park, we served another 323 residents for a total of $80,750. Phase 3, which occurred July 27 through July 30, at the Burns Road Community Center by appointment, we served another 122 residents that qualified for a gift card value of $30,500. In total, we served 1,248 residents, unemployed residents, for a total of $312,000 worth of public gift cards. Average time to serve these residents was less than three minutes. We had a lot of volunteers. We had help from city staff. We had help from council members. And we had a lot of help from Christ Fellowship Church. They volunteered over 1,100 hours of time in assisting the city and its staff and its elected officials in this process. Truly a community-wide event. Certainly one that was appreciated by everyone who appeared and received the gift card. It was very heartwarming to be able to help our unemployed residents. I'll move on now. But still, under the economic development process, we at city staff level began with planning the zoning department to help assist our local businesses with additional outdoor seating and use approvals. If you recall, I reported to you at the June 3rd council meeting that additional outdoor seating had been approved for Coola Fish Bar, Rocco's Tacos, Scoozy? Okay, I got it right. They've been making fun of me all day trying to pronounce Scoozy. Spotos and the Cooper. Additional uses have been approved for, had, was approved for Cotter, Cotler Dance Center for outdoor performances. Legacy Place Drive-In Moving Night for parking on the third level. And Trinity Family Medical Practice, who installed three tents for COVID testing. We now have two additional approvals to report to you. La Maseria Restaurant was approved for additional, two additional seats, two additional tents for seating. And Legacy Place Outdoor Displays, we have allowed the tenants to set up outdoor displays for merchandise in front of their stores so that they could provide more space in the stores for social distancing so they could open up. So with that, those are basically the programs that, that the council has authorized, that we have brought to fruition. We're very proud that we've been able to serve our business community. We're very proud that we've been able to service our residents who have been unemployed and could use the help. And after all, isn't that what we're all here for? So we're, we're very pleased with that. My next item, I'd like to talk a little bit about COVID-19. As you're totally aware, we send out updates on a daily basis, unless I forget to send one out, which you all remind me of very quickly, and so I would send them back.
You don't.
But as far as the latest update is concerned, I'd just like to let you know that since March 10th, fire rescue has had 179 COVID-19 encounters. And currently, we have only two fire rescue personnel that are in quarantine. That's a very good record.
Ron, a question? The 179, those were encounter calls, not necessarily positive?
Those are calls.
So they, we don't know if they were positive patients?
We call them encounters.
Right. Thank you.
Also, I continue to try to provide you the information from our Fire Rescue Department that provides this information about hospital status. As late as today, we got the numbers that currently at Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center, they currently have 32 COVID-19 patients. They have 43 beds available, but none in ICU. They have reported over the, since March, four deaths. At Jupiter Medical Center, they currently have 24 COVID-19 patients. They have 73 beds available and seven beds available in ICU. Over the same period of time, they have reported 26 deaths. In the city, we have nine ALF nursing homes, totaling 1,439 residents there. Currently, there are three COVID-19 patients. They're doing a wonderful job and our Fire Rescue Department continues to work and coordinate with them to help them along the way. So they're doing a great job in this city of taking care of those people who are in those homes, the ALS. A lot of you have been asking questions about what is all of this costing this? So we put together our project expense report for the COVID-19. In personnel costs, we've spent $65,900. Materials and supplies, you can see is 171, almost $172,000 for over $237,000 costs so far. These are eligible reimbursement costs under FEMA's Public Assistance Program. We will continue to track these costs and we will continue to, to apply for reimbursement when it's appropriate. So that's basically the updates on reports of some of the activities that have been going on, that's been approved by you. And some of the very positive and again, heartwarming activities that's been able to go on, helping our business community, helping our residents, helping those that are in the ALS and responding to those people that are ill. Again, our Fire Rescue Department is second to none in the care that is provided to anyone and everyone under their supervision and their responsibility. We're very proud of the work that they do. They work in conjunction with our police department, which was frequently the very first on the scene who are trained and educated and know how to deal with this until a fire rescue comes aboard. Frankly, we're very proud of both the police and Fire Rescue Department in the manner in which they handle themselves in these situations. And I think you see by the number of commendations we get from our citizens throughout the week, how well and highly thought of our public safety departments are. I send them to you frequently. I, I hope you enjoy reading them as much as I do. So our last report here is, you know, I, I told you in the very beginning when we started this capital improvements project that I would be bringing to you, particularly the ones in sales tax. But in addition to that, I would be bringing to you updates on a, on a periodic basis. Tonight, I have to, I have staff to make a presentation to you with that update. I'm very proud to announce that our Deputy Community Services Administrator, Angela Wong Brown, is here. And our Operations Manager, Jennifer Nelly, Nelly, is here. David Reyes would be here, who's a Community Services Administrator, and he's also the Director of our Emergency Management. Unfortunately, David has had a death in his immediate family and unable to attend. But I'm going to tell you right now, Angela and Jennifer carry a very, very heavy load. They have a lot of responsibilities. They're in the construction business on a daily basis, overseeing and managing all of the construction that goes on in this city. And I can't tell you how proud I am of these two because when it comes right down to it, they're the ones that bring those projects in line, on budget.
Mostly on time.
And they do a great job of it. So I'm going to let Angela start now with her report. And again, thank you very much for all that you do, you and Jennifer.
Good evening. Angela Brown for the record. And again, Jennifer Nelly, who is here with me. She extensively works on these projects. Again, it's, I, I was hoping that David could be here tonight, but unfortunately, he is not. And we, he is, please keep him in your, in your thoughts and prayers, please. Currently, we have 44 active capital construction projects totaling $62.4 million. And I apologize, I'm vertically challenged here with this monitor. Tonight, we would like to provide an update on some of those projects for you or else we would probably be here all night if I gave you an update on all of them. So the first one's going to be Tennis Center Clubhouse. Sorry, there's technical difficulties. The tennis, for those of you that aren't aware, we are constructing a new 12,700-square-foot clubhouse at the city's tennis center located on 117 Court North. It will house an indoor deli, multipurpose rooms that are available for rent, pro shop and indoor and outdoor dining. The contractor is currently working on completing punch list items, final finishes and electrical components. If all goes well, then he should be, we should be fully operational by next month. Also, at the tennis center, we have recently added two new full-size center courts this past July, as well as resurfaced five existing courts. The courts are currently in full operation and being utilized daily. You can see them here in the center, if you're not familiar with the tennis center. The old Public Works Facility located on Burns Road in A1A is currently being converted into the new Fire Apparatus and Central Supply, or Logistics Center for short. The image on top shows the yard as it was. The administration offices are here on the right. Those are being renovated as we speak. And the engine shop was demolished. These are the engine shops here. And you can see here, the image on the bottom shows them clearly demolished. In its place will be a new metal building consisting of seven bays with approximately 5,400 square feet of storage. This project is slated for completion in January. In addition to this site, we are also adding a fueling station in the center of the courtyard. It will be a new secured site. Right now, our fueling station is located exterior of the yard. So this new site, this new fueling station will be located here with a canopy and dual pumps. We'll be utilizing the existing underground 10,000-gallon tank for unleaded gas and adding a 1,000-gallon above-ground diesel tank to the fuel island. And hopefully, we'll have it arrive next spring. For City Hall, as you know, we added 17,000 square feet to the east side of City Hall. Staff moved it into the first floor earlier this spring and the second floor was finally completed this past June. Cass Construction is completing the renovation work to the older portion of City Hall to construct a new break room and a conference room. Renovations to the main lobby will also be completed within the next few weeks. And the beautiful Cass trailer that we've been staring at for the last year and year and a half will be removed at the end of next week. I think I'm going to have a party when that happens. The parking lot will be resurfaced and striped shortly after that. And the contractor is going to be completing punch list items over the remainder of this month. At the police department, since last November, we've been renovating approximately 6,000 square feet on the second floor of the police station, as well as the main lobby. The image on the left shows the cramped space at the EOC that PD personnel have been temporarily occupying during construction. And they finally moved into their new home last month. The contractor is currently working on punch list items and completing electrical upgrades to the main electrical rooms at PD and the EOC. All improvements should be complete by the, by next month. At Fire Station 1, which is located just south of City Hall, began last month to create an employee wellness center and clinic. Unfortunately, I don't have any exciting pictures for you since the contractor just got started with demolition. But I do have a floor plan here for you. The well- The well, Employee Wellness Center is located here on the left in blue, and then the clinic will be located here on the right. This facility will provide much-needed services to help city employees maintain health and wellness, which in turn improves job performance. These services also contribute to reduced health insurance premiums for its, for the city and its employees. We anticipate completion by February 2021. The Riverside Youth Enrichment Center is getting a new facelift. The teachers' work area received new furniture and new flooring. For those of you not aware of Riverside Youth Enrichment Center, it's an Apple-accredited, licensed childcare facility owned and operated by the city since 2004. We installed new flooring and furniture, as I said. Also, we're currently adding restrooms and new teacher break room, as well as new cabinets and children's vanities in the lower-level classrooms. This project is slated for completion next month. Beautiful job on finishes. Thank you, Jennifer. And out at the golf course, the old turf care facility at the golf course located on Northlake Boulevard is currently being demolished in preparation for the future golf course expansion. You can see the location of it here near the entrance of the course. The building was in a very poor condition, inadequate for maintenance activities. The demolition should be completed by October, and this facility was replaced by, ta-da, a new golf course maintenance building. It's a 12,000-square-foot facility that includes offices, storage areas, a break room, and a large bays. This facility has been in operation since this past January. It's conveniently located adjacent to the new clubhouse. The Public Safety Training Complex located off Richard Road, a lot of you aren't, don't pass by this area quite often, but it's located on the south end of the city, is finally nearing completion. The police K-9 training area is operational. We will be adding lighting and new awning to protect from the elements. On the fire rescue side, all underground, what you see here on the, on the image, all the underground is in, and we're currently working on roadway construction. The burn tower, also the gray building you see here, is 90% complete and pending utility hookups, which will happen within the next 30 days. All fire props are scheduled for installation in September, including the burn car prop. The aquatic training tank will be placed into operation upon electrical completion, which we hope to have at the end of this month. And last but not least, we have the new Gardens Baseball Complex Expansion Project. The new baseball field, the Miracle League Field, and the training facility are in full operation at the Gardens Park, which is located just east of the Ronald M. Ferris Municipal Complex at the corner of Burns Road and Military Trail. We are finishing the landscape and final parking this month. The Miracle League statue is scheduled to be delivered in October. So, all of these projects are part of the city's capital improvement program, which is managed in a unique way. Most cities and counties have a specific department strictly dedicated to managing CIP. Here at the Gardens, our CIP program is managed by resources and support from different departments throughout the city. Due to the close involvement from all departments, we can expedite all aspects of the project, which results in time and cost savings. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank all of the individuals that helped to get these projects in the ground. Like Cory mentioned, it takes an army to work on one project, and it's very heartfelt to see everybody coming together. It takes everybody from the city clerk's office to finance, to payables, you name it, to get these projects in the ground, and I'm so appreciative, especially with Jennifer's help. I couldn't ask for a better team to work on these projects. So, that's all I have this evening, so if you have any questions, I hope I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Angela and Jennifer. Appreciate very much what you do. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, that ends my report for the day.
We have any questions of Ron?
How about just one of these?
Yeah, great job, guys, always. Anybody want to roast Ron on the Ronald Ferris Municipal Complex comment that came from his staff? No?
No, but it's, it's, this is a really, if you don't mind, this is really an impressive use of our dollars from the, part of the tax dollars that we're receiving. And, you know, we're, we're doing it right. We borrowed the money at the right time. We used the power of having that, all of that money at once, as opposed to $3.5 million a year for the next 10 years, and who knows what's going to happen this year. So, we, we did it in a very smart manner, and we are really answering to the fact that, you know, the city is, is growing a little bit, and we're prepared for it. So, thank you for all your efforts and your forethought in getting it all done.
Great comment, Maria. All right, so, next is the consent agenda. I was going for an over-under of 7 o'clock, so hopefully, no one's pulling anything. And if I can get a motion a second to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Maria's got the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0. All righty then, we're going to Resolution 47-2020. Will the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 47-2020, resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, updating the schedule of fees and charges for various services rendered by the City of Palm Beach Gardens for its citizens and other members of the public for fiscal year 2020, 2021, providing an effective date and further purposes.
And we do have a staff presentation on this. Alan, or you, you got it? Guess I didn't look up I was reading. I thought Alan was coming up.
Yeah, but Sean's does his good.
Yeah. We won't be too hard on you, Sean.
He's the younger, he's the younger Alan.
For the record, Sean O'Brien, Deputy Finance Administrator. This is the annual adoption of the master fees and schedule, or charges schedule for fiscal year 2021. Each year, the city reviews it. Any, any adjustments need to be approved by resolution. There were a couple modifications. Three areas saw some minor adjustments, but that was it. There, the city departments will look to see what charges and make sure that the cost provided, that the fees are enough to cover the cost of the services. Under the Police Department, there was only one change to the special detail rate for the extra duty. Captain or major increased from $57 to $65. That's because they weren't part of the collective bargaining agreement that updated all the other fees. Minimum impact, the only time this position is used is at the Honda Classic. Under the Fire Department, removal of the motor vehicle accident and fire fee. This fee was used in prior schedules, but there was a notation that said contingent upon the state of Florida passing legislation. It never passed, so the fee was removed from the schedule. And under recreation, there were no, no increases to existing fees. There were some changes made to better organize and regroup fees to make more sense and more user-friendly. There were a couple new fees to reflect the use of the newly constructed city facilities. This includes the showcase baseball field, the covered batting and pitching cages, and the Miracle League Field. And there also were changes to cover the approved, the approved fees in the agreement with the PBG YAA. Proposed changes going to effect October 1st. Any copies of the master fees and charges schedules available with the clerk's office or will be posted to the city's website. And staff recommends approval of Resolution 47-2020 as presented.
All right, can I get a motion in second to approve Resolution 47-2020?
I'll make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
Rochelle's got the second. I'll bring it back for discussion. Guys, any questions, or?
It's housekeeping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I did speak with Tony Badala from YAA, and he was engaged with the staff, so thank you for working with them and making sure that our fields are going to be paid for and protected. And other than that, I've got nothing else to say.
All right, I have nothing. Chelsea?
Just housekeeping, and everyone, you know, everything's about the same. It's a few changes.
Rochelle?
No, we have some of the finest facilities in the city. They're reasonably, the fees are reasonable for, for our residents, and the fact that we are not raising anything is, is a good thing, so.
Right.
Good.
Just like the Fire Department and everybody else tonight, everything's been good. All right, so I'm hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries, 5-0. Items for council action discussion and items of interest? I have one. This is why we bring it to 6 o'clock. Look, it's 7:20. And this is a short meeting. I mean, this is, this, we could hold our breath for this long. It's August, right? So, I'm glad we did that. I, I think everybody's going to be, obviously, an hour and a half home to their families and when we get into the business communities that come in here.
We'll stop talking and say what you've got to say, so we can move on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll shut up. Last, last month, I ran my mouth for 45 minutes, so, I'm good. Chelsea, you got something?
I do. I actually wrote it down, so I just wanted to really encourage everyone to vote coming up on August 18th for the primary. So, I did, it's like a paragraph, I'm sorry. Stay home, stay safe, but still vote. If you want to vote by mail in the August primary, the deadline to request a ballot to be mailed to you is 5:00 p.m. on August 8th. Your ballot is due on August 18th by 7:00 p.m., which is Election Day. Allow one week from delivery for your, from your home. Or if you don't like to put it in the mailbox, there are 22 different sites available, including early voting, where you can drop it off, and the Supervisor of Elections offices. So, again, 22 different places if you want to physically drop off your mail-in ballot. Our Palm Beach Gardens Supervisor of Elections office is right here on PGA Boulevard in the courthouse. Or you can take it to any early voting location site now. Early voting is happening now, between now and August 16th, every day from 10 to 7:00. And our early voting site here is at the Gardens Library. All of it can be tracked on the Supervisor of Elections site, which is updated every 15 seconds. So, when you're running for office, it's not at all nerve-wracking to watch it change every, every 15 seconds. Anyway, so just go to the My Status button, and you can watch it from start to finish when you, for the moment that you request a vote-by-mail ballot, when it was sent, and then again, when it was received. The My Status button also gives you your precinct, your party. If you ask for a vote-by-mail, your location's a vote and a sample ballot. And if there's a problem with your signature, it actually lights up, changes to different colors, so you can cure your signature. Today is day four of early voting for the August 18th primary. Cast your vote. Thank you.
Rochelle? Items?
Get it out of Chelsea.
Right on, okay. Can we move on to City Attorney Report?
Well, hold on. Good luck to Maria next week, right? Isn't that two weeks from now?
It's a week from Tuesday, but whose county?
Aren't you ready to, well, best of luck, and we wish you all the best.
Yeah, 10% of the voters have already turned in their ballots, whether it's early voting or more than that by the end of the day. So, yeah, it's, it's happening.
I just hope everybody has a safe Labor Day, that's all, because we will be meeting again after Labor Day.
Right.
Really? I guess September, wow.
Well, I will publicly say I wish you the best.
Thank you.
I have not voted yet, but I plan on voting like tomorrow morning or something. Okay, so I won't sign those. All right, so we're done with that. Any City Attorney Report?
The only thing I have is that our mediation in the, in our Chapter 164 proceedings with the county is scheduled for August 18th at 10:30. It'll be me, our consultant, Mr. Ferris, and a couple of staff members will be participating in the mediation. Obviously, if any settlement occurs, it would be subject to approval by the City Council. That would come back to you if, if we reach some kind of settlement. It's the mobility fee issue, but the mediation is for the 18th.
Perfect. All right, guys, ready to adjourn? Everybody got nothing to say? All right, adjourned. Have a nice night.